Hello guys. Come in little. Share love more respect for the worst.
Now, let's get to hidden. So those were my criteria, these were the normal standard divergences. Let's look at some examples of hidden divergences. So this is one I had for OMG. Yeah, this one I had for OMG. So let's look at our criteria. A hidden bearish divergence is where price makes a lower high, an indicator makes a higher high. This is a high, this is a high, which lines up with these. Price made a lower high, this high is lower than this one.
Hello guys.
But if we line it up, sorry, if we line it up, which we did.
No, no, no.
These points line up, the ones I just talked about.
No, no. Now, can you hear something? It's so loud, it's not even listening. Ah, okay, but you're kidding me, you say. Come on, you're making it.
Price made a lower high, but the indicator actually made a higher high. Just to go back and check.
What's that?
It's a hidden bearish divergence. And as you can see, and this is on the two-day charts, it's quite major. Lower high, higher high, bearish divergence, and we had more downside. Now shout out to Cryptopius, he was in, he's in my Telegram group, which is free but closed at the moment, and he posted after I messaged the group about sort of the importance of divergences. He posted this saying, "Is this a bullish divergence? A hidden bullish divergence?" Well, let's check. Price has to make a low.
Hello guys.
Indicator has to make a lower low.
Learn how to trade.
Price, this low, this low, this low, price is making a higher low. At the same time, look, these line up.
From the famous crypto grid.
The indicator is making a lower low. So this is a hidden bullish divergence. Near, which happened preceding a breakout point. How did it play out?
You face.
Amazingly.
Awesome, now I can.
Great. And that told him. You know, you know, before any breakout, before price even reached the apex of the candle, that there is a hidden bullish divergence, he identified, and obviously that worked out quite nicely. So, yeah, those are the examples. Let's go back to the slides. So how do I use them? Hopefully it should be obvious. And I've talked about this. Identify where momentum is fading either way and to avoid buying top, selling the bottom. So the last and final RSI tool I'll be covering are failure swings. I think this is the more, one of the more complex ones, but I think it's fascinating once you get a good look at what one looks like. So the basic premise of failure swing is that at extreme values, which we know is 17 above or 30 below, the RSI fails to make a higher high or lower low and reverses in the opposite direction. Now, reading this will just give you a headache, but the examples make a lot of sense. So there are two types, a top failure swing and a bottom failure swing. So let's look at them. These are our criteria, which we're going to refer to. So this is a top failure swing on the US dollar and Korean won. So, as we know by criteria, the setup needs to take place at an extreme value. So you see price makes a high and then it fails to make a higher high. But before we go there, let's see, price makes a high, it retraces and paints this low. It goes up and fails to break this level that was set by the previous high. And then on the retrace, it takes out this level and we see it go all the way down this move here. So, does it meet our criteria for a top failure swing? Peak in RSI over 70? Yes. Fails.
Oh, I don't have any viewer on OMG. Viewer. I know. I know. That's a top failure swing.
Is to exceed previous peak in uptrend? Yes. Breaks a previous bottom, bottom from this retrace, takes out this level and retraces close to oversold levels. So this is a perfect example on the two-day chart here of a failure, a top failure swing, the names get jumbled in my head of course. And what you would have caught is on this attempt to make a higher high and takes out this low, you'd be saying, hey, this is a sort of toppy bullshit move, I'm going to take a short position once this low is taken out and it would have been very profitable catching this move all the way down here. So let's look at an example of a bottom failure swing, which is the same principle, but the opposite. Price makes, price bottoms, RSI bottoms out here. It bounces and paints this top. Okay? And then when it goes back into the extreme value, it fails to make a lower low. Okay? And then what happens is coming back up, it takes out this level, which was painted by this bounce, and that's your bottom failure swing. Let's see if it meets our criteria. Bottom in RSI under 30, yes, this is all happening in the extreme value. Price fails, RSI fails to set a new low. This is the first low. Did it set a new low? No, because this level is higher than this one. And then breaks a previous top, bounce, painted this top, fails to make a lower low and then takes out this level. And taking out this high and then breaks a previous top, bounce, painted this top, fails to make a lower low and then takes out this level. And taking out this high is your signal to go long. And as you can see here, ended up being a very nice move and letting you know that, hey, this is the bottom. Once it fails to take out, once it takes out this level, so two parts to it, fails to make a lower low, check. Does it take out the previous high? Check. And that's your signal for reversal. Pretty neat. So, what do I actually use it for? Hopefully it was obvious. I use it in three main ways. To avoid buying the top, to avoid selling the bottom and indicate a trend reversal.
Such big things, eh?
As you can see, there'll be a lot of overlap between divergences and failure swings, but it's another way to identify trend reversal and to sort of get an idea of whether RSI and also price will bounce. Okay? Also price.
Look at that. That's bad.
Price will bounce.
See. This is a very loud. It's a car. She's barely feeling. All the mulatto. So, what is my friend? We're talking. She's singing.
Okay, conclusion. Wow. So about timeframes. The normal type rules apply, I think is fair to say, which is that the timeframe that you're using should reflect the sort of timeframe you have in mind for the trade. So if you want something to play out over the next few days, you shouldn't really be using the hourly RSI. At the same time, if you want to go for a scalp in the short term, you shouldn't be using the daily RSI. I'm more biased towards higher timeframes. For one, that's because of Andrew Emmerich Jr. who spots the most ridiculous divergences on like one hour, two hour, sorry, one day, two day, three day weekly charts. And also just because that's kind of how I've been trained, but as you saw from the early examples of the 17 and 30, you can use all of this stuff, except maybe the midpoint crosses that effectively on lower timeframes. So just make it, pick the timeframe that fits the kind of trade you're trying to make. Putting it all together, this goes back to my original point, now that you're armed with all these tools, don't just rely on one. If you can avoid it. Don't just rate 70, 30. Don't just trade divergences. Don't just look for failure swings. You should, you know, be open-minded and see what the chart and what the indicator is telling you and then apply ideally more than one of the tools you learnt to get confirmation. And on the topic of confirmation, you obviously can use Confluence or other indicators and tools in your TA arsenal. So for example, if you know price is approaching a key fib level or a key cloud support and you see a bullish divergence, that can signal to you that, hey, this bounce is more likely to happen. Or at the same time, if price is approaching a key resistance, which you have from your pattern, trendline, fib, whatever, and you also see a bearish divergence, that can act to let you know that, hey, the likelihood of a breakout is a lot less likely. So yeah, ended up being quite a long lesson, but I expected it to. I spoke more slowly in this one and in more excruciating detail to hopefully get the point across. I hope it's helpful. So this is my fifth lesson. I think if you get a good grip of all five, you'll be in a really good spot to be more self-sufficient with your TA. Of course, if you enjoyed this lesson, all my four other ones, all my work generally, left some tip jar addresses there. And thank you for your kindness, for those who intend to fill the, thank you for your kindness, for those who intend to, you guys, for the crazy support over these weeks, months, whatever, and I look forward to providing more value to you and interacting with you all. Thank you very much. I'll see you for the next one. Got an appetite for dividends? Come get your slice on Etoro. Dividend stocks are like a constant cake that may expand over time.
In this video, I'm going to show you a highly profitable trading strategy with a proven win rate. And the first step is to subscribe to this YouTube channel right now, and the second step is to keep watching. So go below this video and click the link at the top of the description. It will take you to Bitflex, the trading interface and the trading platform we will be using for this strategy. Just create your account, takes 20 seconds. If you deposit $100, you will be getting a deposit bonus. Now, let's go into the strategy. I will use a combination of three indicators, the stochastic RSI, the normal RSI and the MACD. First, let's begin with the stochastic indicator. So go to the indicator tab on your trading view account in with the stochastic indicator. The normal RSI and the MACD. First, let's begin with the. Good morning, guys. Good morning. Here I am, all alone, with her. In this video, I'm going to show you a highly profitable trading strategy with a proven win rate. And the first step is to subscribe to this YouTube channel right now, and the second step is to keep watching. So go below this video and click the link at the top of the description. It will take you to Bitflex, the trading interface and the trading platform we will be using. Just create your account, takes 20 seconds. If you deposit $100, you will be getting a deposit bonus. Now, let's go into the strategy. I will use a combination of three indicators. Uh, if you deposit $100, you will be getting a deposit bonus. Now let's go into the strategy. I will use a combination of three indicators, the stochastic RSI, the normal RSI and the MACD. First, let's begin with the stochastic indicator. So go to the editor tab on your trading view account, type stochastic and select this one right here. If you don't have trading view, just view account, type stochastic and so so go to the indicator tab on your trading view account, type stochastic and select this one right here. If you don't have trading view, just click the link down below. I have a link to trading view. If you use my link, you will get a discount. Anyway, so this indicator that you will have on trading view will help you to identify if the market is overbought or oversold. It has two, the blue line line is the K percentage and the orange line is the D percentage. When traders use The stochastic indicator alone, they often make a common mistake. They take a buy position when it hits oversold and a sell position when it hits overbought. Relying solely on this indicator will lead you to a low win rate. So to improve your trading strategy, you should combine the stochastic indicator with other
What is the most common mistake? They they would try to stay. I've heard it before, so let's talk about it. Okay. What is the most Who it is, what it is? Who is, is that? Is that? What is that? Who is that? What is? What is? What's called? What, what is of? Yes. So.
other indicators for better results. Let's go to the second indicator you will use in this strategy, the RSI. Go to the indicators tab, type RSI and select this one here. It's a very popular indicator used in trading. Usually traders use the RSI to identify overbought and oversold conditions in the market. But since you already have the stochastic indicator, identify overbought and oversold conditions in the market. But since you already have the stochastic indicator for that purpose, using both indicators to give the same signals, it's useless. Instead, you will use the RSI as a confirmation indicator for identifying trends. To do this, you should go to the indicator settings, click here, then click style and change the upper and go to the indicator settings, click here, then click style and change stochastic indicator for that purpose, using both indicators to give the same signals, it's useless. Instead, you you will use the RSI as a confirmation indicator for identifying trends. To do this, you should go to the indicator settings, click here, then click style. To do this, you should go to the indicator settings, click here, then click style trends. To do this, you should go to the indicator settings, click here, then click style and change To do this, you should go to the indicator settings, click here, then click style and change the upper and lower bands to 50. Here you have a C single line in the middle, which you can easily use to confirm trends. If the RSI is above the middle line, the price is on an uptrend. So you should only take buy positions. On the other hand, if the RSI is below the mid so you should only